I'm welcoming viewers in Massachusetts, viewers all over the social media and viewers on the internet. My name is Ronald Bernard and I'm hosting the show called Integration. Integration is a show that is bringing to you through the partnership between Immigrants Development Alternatives IDA and Multicultural Television Network which is MCTV. The show has been bringing to you in order to provide two things. First, to educate people about things that is very useful they need to know. And second, it's sharing information about resources that is in the community for people to know and they can access those resources in a way to make informed decisions for their life here while they are in the US. So today, I am glad we have with us Tina Cardoso. Welcome Tina.
Thank you Ronald.
Thanks for having me.
You're very welcome. Tina Cardoso is the- City Council at Large for Brockton. And thank you for accepting our invitation. And Tina, we know you originally from Cape Verde.
Yes.
And now you're in Boston. Let's- We are in, let's see, Randolph, but you are in Brockton where you serve. Let's, you know, work the viewer of MCTV, your journey from Cape Verde to, you know, Brockton. Brockton as the City Council at Large.
Okay, so I came to the US when I was four years old with my family. We grew up in Dorchester. I was in Dorchester for most of my life, that's where I went to school, high school, elementary school, high school. And I've been in Brockton about nineteen years now. So I moved to Brockton because of the, I wanted to buy a home essentially, and the home prices were cheaper. So that's what landed me in Brockton. I raised my kids there who have all grown up now and, you know, went to school there. But, so like I said, I came really young, at four years old. So it was different for me. It wasn't like I immigrated older in life. So I essentially grew up in America. I still faced a lot of similar challenges.
And have you had a chance, you know, go back and- See the country and-
Absolutely.
Connect with the culture more?
Yep. So I always had a passion for my people and I wanted to learn more about my culture and my language. So in Dorchester where some of my siblings didn't really integrate in the Cape Verdean community, I did. So because of that curiosity and that passion, I had to learn more. So I learned to speak the language fluently. I always went to the parties. I learned how to dance. And so I went back to Cape Verde when I was eleven, my mother brought me. And when I went at eleven, I fell in love. And so since then, I've gone back quite frequently, especially in adulthood, I've gone back. Almost for the last ten years, almost every year, I've gone back to visit.
Okay. How, how, how did you, like, I know you said you came young and how was the, you know, through overcome, you know, barriers and, you know, through, you know, you go to, went to high school and you nurse and City Council at Large. So how did, you know, overcome?
There are a lot of challenges. My mom, when she came here, my mom- I never went to school because in Cape Verde a lot of times they wouldn't put women in school because they didn't want them to learn and to advance. It's very male dominated country. So the women a lot of times had to do field work and stay home with the kids and a lot of times they didn't put them in school. So my mom signed with an X when she came to the US. She didn't even know how to sign her name. So she had to learn, you know, her name, how to write her name and go to school and learn to speak English. And so there was a lot of challenges with that. She couldn't be heavily involved with us. So essentially, if we wanted to act up, it was easy for us to do so because she didn't know what was going on, like, in the schools. And I did a lot of acting up. So she, you know, like, it was hard back then for parents to, it's hard now, it was much harder then to engage and integrate, like, especially in the schools. So we kind of got away with murder growing up. And then there was the challenge of not knowing who you are because being Cape Verdean, you know, we have different shades. You know, the Cape Verdeans are a very mixed population of people. So there were Cape Verdeans that are very light skinned, that looked white, and Cape Verdeans that are very dark, that looked more African. And then you're kind of like, you don't know where you fit in. So growing up in Dorchester, being around a lot of African Americans, it was tough. People used to say like, "Oh, are you Hispanic?" We're not Hispanic. We're not, you know, African Americans. We're from Africa. But it was just, it was a very confusing time for us. It wasn't until in recent years in adulthood that we start to embrace who we are. Learn who we are and embrace it. But back then, a lot of times Cape Verdeans would say they were Portuguese. And so it was, it was just very, I, when I looked in the mirror, I didn't see myself as white. I had kinky hair and, you know, my skin tone. But then I had some Cape Verdeans saying that they were white. So it was really tough trying to figure out where you fit in. You weren't black enough, you weren't white enough. You just didn't know where to fit in back then. And there was, it was a lot of, there was a lot of racial divide already with the white folks. Where I grew up, right in Dorchester, I don't know if you remember Dorchester Ave and Savin Hill.
Yes.
Savin Hill was very white, you know, South Boston. You couldn't even go into South Boston back then. And where we grew up was very black. So it was a really tough time trying to figure out where you fit in. Back then, we didn't even really talk about race, you know, we were just trying to fit in and survive.
And for school, did you go-
The elementary schools and then I ended up going to law. I was always very smart, so I went to Boston Law.
That's good.
But unfortunately, I got in, fortunate and unfortunate, I got into some, you know, wrong crowd type of thing. And I ended up dropping out when I was in tenth grade and I found myself having a baby. So by the time I was eighteen, I had two kids. And I was in a tough situation, a very violent situation that I had to get out of. So that was the challenge then. My mom was like, "Okay, you made your bed, you're lying." And I had to leave home. You know, so I had to drop out of school. And then I had to go through that. Situation with the person I was with and finally break free. Went back and got my GED. And then from there, I went to Roxbury Community College. I was very determined because like I said, I was always really smart. And I was determined to show folks that gave up on me because I was a teenage mom, that I could do it. So I went to Roxbury Community College and got my degree there. And then I went to US Boston. The whole time with the two kids as a single mom, you know, struggling with them, trying to pay rent, trying to work, trying to go to school. It was the toughest time of my life back then.
Yeah, I congratulate you. I could imagine how tough, you know, being a single mom and how to manage all of that. And despite of that, you stayed focused.
Right.
So you stayed focused and you went to nursing school. What has pushed you to do this?
My kids. I really felt like I wanted to give them a better life. What I didn't have growing up now, in retrospect, when I look at it, it was, my mom came here. She was older, she was in her forties. Like I said, she didn't know how to read and write. She didn't know how to speak English. My father was an alcoholic and there was a lot of situations at home that were really tough for us to go through. So having all of that was such a challenge for us. It's amazing. I have five brothers. We all turned out really well. We all did really well, given the situation that we were in. But when I think about it, maybe if circumstances were different, I wouldn't have gotten pregnant at sixteen. Wouldn't have dropped out of school. If there were more support, like what you're trying to do here, educating people and families who come over, that's what I do now. And we could talk about that a little bit. But when I think about my mom's situation and our situation back then, had we had more support, maybe things would have been different. Luckily, in my case, it turned out okay. I was determined to have a better, I had that will. Not everybody's born with the same will. I had the will to survive and to provide a better life for my kids. So that's why I did nursing school, so that I could make good money and take care of them, you know. So it was a struggle. Six years and then finally got my degree in ninety-eight. And I've been a nurse for over twenty years now.
Thank you Tina. And all the viewers are reminding you, you are listening to Integration. Integration is the show that comes from the partnership between Immigrants Development Alternatives IDA and Multicultural Television Network MCTV. So we bring you this show to give you advice, to give you information, things you need to know while you are settling in the US. Today, we're still having with us Tina Cardoso and we are continuing with the dialogue just having with Tina. So Tina, you talked about you now more engaged in helping the community. If we've talked more about the-
About five years ago, I fell into a kind of a depression. You know, your kids get older, they leave home. I've been a nurse for a while and just thinking about my career path. Where to go? What do I do now? I fell into a kind of a depression, like, what do I do now with my life? I think we all get there after forty. So I said- The Cape Verdean community has had huge loss around gun violence. So I said to myself, there's a lot of programs out here, but we need programs that are more culturally appropriate, that understand our culture, have the language and all of that. Because these programs are good, but they don't understand us. So I found that there was a need to have more culturally appropriate violence prevention programs and mental health education. Because you know, in our cultures, even in the Haitian community, mental health is something that's very taboo. And nobody wants to talk about, you know, being depressed or being, you know, having mental illness. It's really a tough topic. And domestic violence- Violence is huge. That's a tough topic. And trauma, you know, so we don't address those issues readily. So I said to myself, "Let me start this organization." Cape Verdean Women United is what I called it because I wanted to empower Cape Verdean women that I felt were the pillars in the community to be more involved and engaged with their families and to seek resources that were available. And then, so I started doing this, more like women empowerment. And then that, from that came the collaborating with organizations in the community so we can- Programs to the community, not only in Cape Verdean Creole, but in Haitian Creole, in Spanish. And that's what we've been doing for the last several years in Brockton. Is not reinventing what's already there. It's just kind of working with, you know, the why and the other resources in the community that deal with mental illness and violence prevention, to educate the community. Because when people come to programs and they see you and me and we look like them, they're more likely- To want to participate and to access resources than if they went somewhere where people didn't look like them, people didn't speak their language. You know, so that's what we've been doing more lately. But it came out of that, every, my life experience, everything I went through, I wanted to be- Wanted to be a mentor to other young women to say, "Hey, I went through the domestic violence situation. I went through, you know, I was a high school dropout. I, you know, I went through having, being a teenage mom." Everything I went through, I wanted to share with other people to help empower them. And so that's what we've been doing in the community for the last several years.
Okay. In terms of empowerment, because I remember like, one of the studies that I did, it was for my masters. It was focused more on violence against women. So I was looking at more in Haiti what happened, especially after the earthquake. So in, when you had the program, the program to empower women's, have you, let's say, are you satisfied so far with the outcome? And you see more improvement in terms of how women understand, and let's say, women and men or the family, how they understand about either domestic violence and resources available and how they should, you know, anticipate or avoid, like, you know, negative impact on their kids and stuff like that?
That's huge. So we've seen some changes in the Cape Verdean community. When we started, we had a women's program that we would do every week at the Cape Verdean Association to invite women to drop in. We didn't label it anything. We didn't label it domestic violence, nothing. Because in our cultures, when you label something, people are like, "Oh." So it was a support group for women. It was very slow. Sometimes my partner and I would sit there and stare at each other every week and nobody would come. Finally, people started showing up. So I don't want to- We credit for anything. I think it was a collaborative thing. Once people started seeing us talk about this stuff, we went on radio, we went to churches. You know, in Cape Verde even, they're starting domestic violence programs, sexual abuse programs. Excuse me, because that's huge in our, in our countries. And all of a sudden, I don't know if it was, I wasn't in it. Back then, but I didn't see it. But I started to see more and more that things were changing. People were opening up. More women kept coming to the group. And now we get a lot of folks that participate. My challenge I'm having now is in the Haitian community. That's been a huge challenge, trying to pull out people. There's a lack of trust, which is a big thing with any of the cultures. People are afraid that if you tell them, if I tell you my business, you're going to put it on Facebook. You know what I mean? So we have to build trust and it's not easy. Because our people have been oppressed for so long, they've gone through so much, they don't trust people readily to open up and to talk to them. And a lot of times, we are, our own mothers will tell us, "No, don't talk about that. Sweep it under the rug. Keep it in the closet. Don't, no, you don't want to bring that up." You know what I mean? So it's been a huge challenge that we still face. You know, there's still a lot of work to be done.
Okay. When you mentioned about the Haitian community, do you have- Because I assume that the language might be one of the barrier because the same way you mentioned, when someone come for either services and they see people like us, they feel like we are more related. But also in terms of the language, if they, someone come to you and they feel like, "Oh, you speak, you know, Cape Verdean Creole," they're going to feel more comfortable, you know, to talk to you. The same for the Haitians. They come to me, they feel like I speak, you know, Haitian Creole. So do you have the language?
Capacity. So we have a program called RACC, Raising a City of Champions, because you know Brockton is the city of champions. So what this program does, it's an eight-week workshop and we tackle all issues of violence. Bullying, cyberbullying, internet violence, domestic violence, sexual abuse. We tackle mental health, how to take care of yourself, stress, you know, reducing stress. And parental engagement, like what you meant, is huge, having parents more involved in the schools. So we go through this program. Each week, my facilitators that go in, and we typically will go to like to the Adult Learning Center in Brockton because we already have an audience there. There's at least twenty-five students in a class that are Haitian Creole, Spanish and Cape Verdean there to learn English. So the ESL classes are the most important place you can be, besides the churches. Because that's where I will go, like in the factories. But in the factories, I'm sure their boss is not going to stop productivity for us to go in and do teaching. So we found that ESL is a great place to go and provide this material. So we go in each week with a Haitian, a Spanish and a Cape Verdean facilitator. I bring all three, just in case. So we will, the information will be in English, right? But with the option to translate. So we'll say to folks, "Do you understand the material? If you don't understand, we'll say it in your language." So then if the Haitian person wants- Us to translate, then I have a clinician. And these are clinicians. Then I just lay people there, mental health clinicians. Clinicians that will go in to, so that we know that they give an appropriate information to the students. So each week, we're there for an hour and a half with this RACC program. We do it once a year there. And we do other things in the community to educate. North Junior High School in Brockton, we just started working out of there. And we're able to do programs there Monday through Thursday. So we have a Haitian women's support group that we just started on Tuesday evenings. And then the Cape Verdean women's support group is on Wednesdays. We did it like this because we used to come together and it was very hard, it was time consuming to translate each language. So we would have someone that was Spanish, we'd have to speak Spanish. Someone that was Haitian, it was too time consuming, so we separated. So now we have the Haitian women's group. Every Tuesday, folks at home that are listening at North Junior High School in Brockton, if you live in Brockton, it's from, excuse me, six-thirty to eight o'clock every Tuesday at North Junior High School on Oak Street for the Haitian community. And the Cape Verdean women's support group is on Wednesday evenings. So we're trying to offer programs for all cultures, bring the language capacity that a lot of the programs don't have.
Well, it's, it's, it's very huge what you're doing. We're going to go to the, what you're doing as a City Council at Large. But let me remind all the viewer, you are still listening to Integration. And Integration is through the partnership between Immigrants Development Alternatives IDA and Multicultural Television Network which is MCTV. So we continue with the dialogue with Tina Cardoso. Tina is the current City Council at Large for Brockton. And Tina, so, so far, how do you, how do you enjoy, if I use that word, how do you enjoy the position?
Okay, so I'm still in a learning process. There's a lot to learn. It's definitely different. Because being a nurse, I wasn't into politics. I ran because again, doing the community service, I identified that there was a need to have more representation at City Hall. We didn't have, I mean, we're a large minority, I hate to use that word, but a large black and brown community in Brockton and then we didn't have that representation in City Hall. So I felt like, okay, if not me, then who? You know what I mean? That type of thing. So I said, okay, so I'm already embedded in the community. I'm already, I've networked, I've made a lot of connections. Let me try. So the first time I ran in my ward, so Ward Three, against the incumbent, he'd been there for fourteen years. So I was like, "I don't know, this is a long shot." But I came really close. You know, less than two hundred votes from winning in the ward. And then the second time, I wasn't going to run because two years- Two years goes by so fast, you know. I said, "I can't do this again. It takes a lot out of you." But then, you know, we had the, our mayor passed away. And so when our mayor passed away, a lot of people came out. It was like fifteen candidates. Everybody wanted to run for office. So we had two- Of the City Council at Large folks run for the mayor seat, Jean Bradley and Bob Sullivan. So then that would open up two at-large seats. So I said, "Let me try and see if I can get one of those seats." Because it's easier to get an open seat than to try to take out an incumbent. But it was still a long shot because we had fifteen people running. There were a lot of people running. So then when I made it through the primaries and I was number, it was in the top eight, I was still number six. So I'm like, "That's going to be a stretch to try to come up." Because only four could win. And two of them were sure to win. You know, you had Win Pharaoh most rightly because I'd already been there. So that left two seats and I was number six. So when I won that night, I was like, I was in tears. I'm like, what happened? Because I really thought it was just going to be a long shot to try to come up from number six to, to get one of those two seats. Essentially, that were open. So it was a surprise. It was a total surprise. So, you know, still trying to get through that shock and then trying to work through how do I do the best I can to represent the people. And it's a lot of learning, you know. A lot of learning right now.
Okay, so it's a lot of learning and probably after the learning, we're going to start, you know, moving away with something like more concrete. So now, you through, you went through the, as the CEO of the organization and now plus, I mean, Randolph City Council at Large. So in terms of resources, so people who are listening to the show that, you know, mostly, you mentioned a lot of things about, you know, in terms of domestic violence, how you empower women and stuff. Are there any other kind of resources or program you might be aware of? Or you think of, you know, working together with all the council to bring and helping, you know, people to, you know, integrate or having a better, you know, future?
So I'm thinking with the council- So that there's a lot that I could do to bring in what I'm learning grassroots. Because my organization is grassroots. So everything that I learn, I'm going to be able to bring to the council and create some kind of, even if it's a small change, that will help our people. So there's a lot that you can champion as a City Council, but I want to stay focused on what I know. And I know that violence prevention is my thing, right? So, you know, you get calls from developers, you get calls from all types of people, you know, that want to like, want your help with your agenda. But what I am trying to do is just stay true to what I believe in, you know, what I want to do for the people. And that's to try to engage our parents, continue to empower women, continue to empower the community to be more involved, unite the community as much as I can. Because you know, we have Haitian, we have Cape Verdean, we have the Latina. Communities in Brockton that essentially practicing silos, you know, there's, there's no unity, true unity. It's lacking at least, that I, that I've identified. So hoping to kind of unite folks. I know that it's a huge challenge. But do the best that I can to make sure that I'm inclusive, as much as I can be. I can't do it alone. But as much as I can be, try to be inclusive. With my programs, try to share information, like what I'm doing here on your program and the Cape Verdean programs. To just try to bridge that gap because it's important. The more united we are, the better off we are. Especially in a city like Brockton. So continue to champion some of that, the unity, the violence prevention, the parental involvement, the engagement. Those are the things I want to stay focused. And there's a lot you can do on the council because I feel like we can educate a lot of the other councilmen and some of the folks in government around who are our people, what are their needs, you know. Because sometimes it's, they need the education. They don't know. Because nobody's come to them and say, "Hey, you know, this, these are the issues in our community." So we need to continuously educate them. In both ways, get the folks in government, engage with the community and get the community engaged in government. Then I'm hoping that that would be what I would, you know, champion for now. And then, who knows what the future holds if I get elected. I want to do bigger things, you know, but for now, just do thirty steps until you're ready to go to the community.
Hopefully, you know, by, I, I think like during the two years, it's like when people can do an evaluation.
Right, 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 right.
Should I, you know, give her another, you know, ceremony? But as we are at the end of the, of the show now. So if viewers are listening to you and they know about, you know, your, let's say, a little bit of your story from Cape Verde and things you went through, and now you've become, you know, a nurse and a City Council at Large for Brockton. What, what kind of, like, anything you would like to share with the viewer? It could be an advice, it could be something that, either an issue you are passionate about and you want to say, it's like a last word about that.
Thank you so much. And this has been a great show. I love to talk about my experiences. Hopefully, if I can help one person out there with my story, that was my slogan during the campaign. My story is our story. Because if I can empower and maybe help just one person, then I've helped many. You know what I mean? So my thing is, we have to do more of that. I'm passionate about uplifting our people. And as women especially, we need to uplift each other. There's a lot of competition at times between women and a lot of, oh, you know, once you're, you're trying to do something, "Why is she doing that? What does she think, who does she think she is?" Instead of doing that, you know, I would love for people to come together and talk about things. And yeah, come ask me why I'm doing it. You know, don't just judge me. You know, so I've had people reach out to me who want to start an organization like mine and I've helped them out. They want to know, how do I do a 501(c)(3)? How do I incorporate my organization? And I'm happy to help them out. First, if their projects are similar to mine, I offer them to join me, because it doesn't make sense to create a million When we can work together. But then if they're adamant that they want their own thing, then I help them out. That's fine. Because it's all about helping each other. The work is immense. There's a lot, there's enough work out there for all of us to do. So just helping each, and as far as the politics, we need more people of color, especially in Brockton, To unite so that we can get more people to represent us in city hall. So if there's anything I can do to help people who want to get into government, I'm happy to do that. You know, like I said, I'm not a
I had all the issues that you can imagine. So if I can do it, you can do it. But we need to uplift
And help each other and empower and educate. So I appreciate you having me on. I appreciate shows like this. I'm happy to come back anytime and pass on information. We're having our first at-large meeting tomorrow night in Brockton, where the four city council at-large folks will be there. And if people want to come out to that, to learn more about me, then they're, they're welcome to do that as well.
Okay, so tomorrow night, it's Wednesday, February 12?
Yes. At 7:00 PM at the Arnone School in Brockton.
Okay. So all the viewers, you've been listening to Integration and I say thank you
Thank you for having me.
To accept our invitation and I believe we had a great conversation.
Yes, it was.
For the viewers, I believe also it has been very helpful and useful to hear the story and know about some programs That through, you know, Tina's organization and through her work also, You can access things that can help you. So my name is Ronald Bernard and I am glad to present this show called Integration. I will see you for the next show. Okay?